All right then, we'll go ahead and open the Commissioner's Work Session on July twenty-sixth. This meeting is being recorded and anything said in the meeting will become part of our public record. We'll post it on the CAC YouTube channel in the near future. No cost for public hearing, no whole items discussion. First new item, we are opening tax bids for the bike pickup trail. I believe we only want, correct?
There is only one.
Total bid amounts ninety thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars five cents. Nine zero nine nine two oh five. Who did it from back?
I.
So, I guess we'll have to go look at the budget. That was, I believe, more than anticipated, right?
Yeah, based on an estimate, there's our numbers were, so.
Alright, so.
I think a lot of the companies are pretty well booked up trying to finish projects for this year, so.
Alright, well, we'll leave it in your hands, I suppose. If you want to go forward with this recommendation, we can make it work financially. We'll get it on the agenda either Wednesday or the next. Do you think you'd make a recommendation by this Wednesday?
How long do you get with our engineer and what would be the...
Why don't we put it on the agenda just in case?
Yeah, I can, I can let you know either way.
Yeah.
As long as you can give me till the morning of.
Yeah.
To pull it.
Well, we can just table it if not.
Okay.
Under the new law, we have to put it on the agenda in advance, so. Yeah, it's no big deal, I think, don't make that determination by, I wanna say eleven fifty-nine, we'll just table it. Alright, thank you.
I mean, Dan, originally, what were we looking at? Like, what was the hopeful number?
Well, we were hoping to be in the neighborhood of the seventies.
Well, I guess with that in mind, and the idea was you were gonna use Act thirteen money, right? I mean, we should take a look at the mainest budget, like, you know, some, some of the other things. It's just gotta be something there, we can figure out a way.
Okay. What about the agenda, if it's figured out?
I can, I can look at some numbers, both Act thirteen and, and then you wanna look at the main side, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, well, if there are no other questions for me, I'm going to leave now. It's not best, it's not.
You got some important people to meet with, Dan?
What's that next?
You got some important people to meet with, Dan?
Turn right.
Thanks, folks. Hey, Dan. Did Brian pull the invited to the CPACE meeting? Not, you just hook your head in, and if Brian's in his office, see if he can come up.
To this meeting?
Yeah.
I will do that.
If he's not, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, two items of discussion from Tax Planning Bureau's film. So, I pass these.
I think you're...
For more, if somebody wants to judge. We have a good change in tax plan. We now have to do a registration process for bidders. They can no longer show up the day of the sale and bid. So they now must register with the Tax Planning Bureau. And then we have to get that list of registered bidders to municipalities. So they can here object or approve the list of bidders. So if they don't want to submit a bid, they will get back with me, and then I have to hold a bidder. And then it will work out with municipality to figure out what's going on. What kind of process is that? So, it's ten days prior to the tax sale. There are prospective bidders for the tax sale are required to submit their application ten days in advance of the tax sale. If they are not individual for the middle, if they're proposing that the bidder be a corporation or LLC or other entity, they have to provide authorized documentation. They have to list the names of managers or other officers. And the idea is that, I think, in the past, there's been an opportunity to misuse the system to a lot of people who don't remain current on their obligations to have different LLCs take title at the time of the tax sales. They're also required to time they fill the application to complete an affidavit that the bidder, either themselves or the entity they're bidding on, is not in currently due or owing any tax obligation within the county. Or that they haven't let any properties go into disrepair with outstanding violations related to that. We have the experience that we've pulled before, so. One handed, I'm normally like, more process than they take, but honestly, it's not the ideal. The first year will be challenging. People will still be used to just showing up, done bidding, but they can already get it out there in website and newspaper and whatnot. Try to keep trying to look. Well, the interesting thing's reading the bill is that it's not clear from the stat- from the statute that the municipalities, not the counties, the municipalities that have the right to object to a bidder. Although, I suppose that the county, I think that now the county as someone who's owed taxes has the right to review the bidders themselves and object. But that, the deadline to object may extend even past the tax sale itself. Depending on how you read it, you may be able to object to the sale even ten days af- up to ten days after the sale's been conducted. Yeah. So how does the municipality get back to the tax claim? Are you gonna generate a form or what? So, the next distribution in the first of August, through a letter with the distribution explaining, hey, you look, I'm gonna assist what's been happening. I'm gonna heads up. Then when I do send that list ten days prior to the tax sale, they know what they're looking at. So they get back to me, most likely via email, that's actually the quickest, best way to get, get back to me. The timeframe's pretty tight there, wanna get that list out, begin, and then... It's a busy time period. Exactly. Yeah, in ten days, I mean, do they need to take a vote on it, or is the secretary just kind of... From what I read, they just respond back, don't let someone so bid, that's it. So then I have a lot of bidder, and then you would have to work it out with the municipality. By the time they work it out, then it might be too late to do that.
I think though, once it's up and running, their awareness of it would be greater. Because they, most of them know people that they're...
Yeah.
I mean, all they have to do is probably hear the name, and they would know.
Yeah.
The name, that you know.
Realistically, it's mostly a little city.
Is there any type of criteria that the city or any other municipality would have to do so that we're not unfairly discriminating against anyone?
Most of the time, it's, somebody they know have issues within the municipality where they own multiple properties that are collated, and then they have a track record of that. It's, it's not common. It's not, I mean, it happens, like, there's definitely been situations that we've had where there were people who, you know, shouldn't, like, we'd go, we really shouldn't let them have another one of these, so.
The main issue was multiple, one person to have multiple businesses.
Yeah.
And then one person would still be a signer in that business, but they would just do X, Y, Z business, and A, B, C business, and then it is, they would just try to hide from it, in fact, that they had political taxes. Those would stop that.
Yeah, and we've had that too, where there, there's somebody who owes back taxes, and then they have this other shadow corporation, and then they still get up. My big thing with it, honestly, is that dealing with blighted property, it's like an example for every time we had a company and nobody could get ahold of anybody. Because you see that a lot with the tax, through tax claims, these corporations, I often wonder if they end up in, you know, like, consolidation mortgage backed securities and stuff like that, you know, where they consolidate all of these, you know, entities or, or, you know, sort of have financial instrument. Anyway, every year, there's at least two or three where it's some corporation or phoenix that bid on it in, or something, you know, or got ahold of the tax claim.
I think we have a recent example on Liberty Street with one that's basically a shell corporation with no assets, nothing to come after, and so. Yeah, I forget you. This type of, this type of registration is a great way to at least hopefully find some of those before they have a chance to do it.
So, part of the, where you go? I'll, I'll just turn it to you. Go ahead. So, part of the registration process, with Act thirty-three, you get charged a fee for registered bidders. And I think Commissioner Emerson and I talked, fifteen dollar registration fee was appropriate, which is what usually Tax Planning Bureau would charge, which would help pay for bidder cards that won't get, so I think that bidder numbers are such, okay, for the paperwork and the time. Doesn't seem to cover that. Yeah.
Definitely didn't want it to be a barrier to entry.
Okay, anyone else?
So, I have us. I think, I, I'll just try to comment. Two, two or three things. Number one, I think the affidavit that we've prepared follows the statute fairly closely. That we're asking people to verify, basically, they're not involved in pretty specific issues as far as feeling like they pay taxes. People, there's one section where if a county or city issues landlord licenses, somebody who's bidding hasn't had their landlord license revoked.
Yeah.
And then the other issues like blight or outstanding mortgage violations, like we discussed.
Yeah, the city chose to do the registration process, that would be a tool for them to use in the future.
The...
The city.
That's me.
Registration. Try to keep saying it.
I, I would encourage any bidder to contact the tax plan office well in advance. So, one of the things I think I'm concerned about is there's a requirement in the statute for documentation that authorizes an entity to bid on behalf of it. This is really just getting entities to comply with what's written in their statutes. You have to have a specific authorization if you're gonna purchase real estate. So we try to make it as easy as possible. The standard documents you would look for are prepare resolution if you're a corporation, or minute, meeting minutes. People are open to, they can bring in an operating, bring in work, or buy loss to stay the same. But some of these LLCs that people start, they haven't, they don't have that background of paperwork, so it can be done on short notice, but not on the afternoon to the ten day before the sale, you know.
I think another plus is registration process, it would help the auction regardless, it would be faster too, because we'll have certification done, we'll have all their information, we'll get a bidder number and date of, and then we just give their number and move forward. So it's not stop the auction, so it'll be a lot faster process.
Well, I'm excited about getting the call up numbers instead of...
Can you in the loop?
I'd say the real question is, are you gonna talk fast or do you do it? You're not, you're not. So, so do I have ten thousand, do I have ten thousand?
You've been there.
I know, that's what I'm saying, let's, let's soup it up.
Well, the county, well, I, this is totally aside, and there's not any real discovered. The county ever wanted to hire, you know, a licensed auctioneer, maybe, this is not germane to the judicial point, but there may be more time when the county wishes to bid on something, and they would either have to find someone other than me to bid, or, or find, and then find someone else to run the auction.
Wouldn't them show up in a tweed hat?
Obviously.
Like a fan, and some lemonade?
I was, I was looking at, like...
Sweet tea.
I was looking at, like, one of those tiny girls about, like, my...
It's pretty soon.
Yeah, so I guess, this Wednesday will be part of the years, and then build on it. And then, once that's approved, I'll have a website, create a packet, P D app, the download right on the website, most approved, that's it. We could just add it to the agenda, and then the other registration and all the procedures. Alright.
Uh, my only thing is, is we've gotta get away from putting a logo behind tax. Because when you photocopy it, it makes it almost unreadable.
Really?
Yeah. Like, I, I've noticed this, like, on a couple of things. I know it's kind of neat when you look at it while...
I saw a couple of copies like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably to be in the source, so. I use it. Okay. Well, we talked about that offline. Okay. Anything else, Congressman?
Got it.
H R.
Hi, Morty. I just wanted to discuss briefly Pennsylvania Act fifty-seven twenty twenty. It's gonna, it's gonna change a little bit how we can hire certain individuals in the county. What would be the sheriff department employees, the county detective, and it potentially affect our probation officers. So basically, what the act does is it suddenly constrains on how law enforcement agencies can acquire and share certain types of information, and requires those agencies to update a statewide database of information along enforcement employees at certain times during the employment process. I couldn't mention this packet on my Saturn, on my presentation with my neighbor, Dr. Nicholas Gabriel. He's something he fairly presented that, you know, I'm gonna have to be working with the sheriff's department for the new hires as well as the... I'm not sure if it's gonna completely be part of probation. I'm waiting to get back from the courts on that, I won't interplay with that, but it's gonna, there's a system, and we're gonna have to go in and actually update the system, so it's gonna alter how we do our background checks and such. So, compliance date, I believe, is August sixteen. So it's fast approaching, there is a system that we're gonna be going into, and it's about... The types of information under the act that are, is information, limited information, separation records, hiring reports. So there are gonna be a lot more involved. And I have reached out to the sheriff to see if he gets it down, and we'll, we'll be in compliance with this, and we'll work together. So unfortunately, I don't have a great deal of information, because Lisa and I are just diving into it, but I wanted to ensure that everybody there is aware of what's happening, and that's a go forward, we'll be providing updates.
Okay, similarly, wanna write up or construction about that, you have it on the agenda as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else before going over to CPACE? Alright, Vince, I'd like to call on you to kind of give a quick introduction to the CPACE program. Turn it over, maybe you want, want to, but the city approached the county a little about a month ago, I think, to introduce the concept of CPACE. We actually have fond of classes, a C cap on it, we're kind of familiar with the concept, but didn't drive, didn't drive it because really think it would be probably used, but I guess if the city's coming to us and saying they'd like to do it, then we should certainly look at it. So, Vince?
Thank you, Commissioner. So it was probably about three months ago at a planning commission meeting when our chairman, now chairman, Angie Dart, proposed that city investigate, along with the county, to a dot CPACE resolution allowing this program to be able to be available for developers to do projects. And business owners looking to upgrade equipment to make it more energy efficient. This is, this is about energy efficiency and finding a way to help finance these type of projects. And I'm sure you will be going over it in more detail, but I think Angie and myself see this as, and Nancy, and our city manager Nancy Prina, as a way to, as another economic development tool, as we're trying to reimagine and redevelop some of these buildings in downtown, and, and around the city and the county, to just have another tool to help with the process and financing. So it's, it's a great program, there's, I don't know how many county, can't remember how many counties, but most of them are in large, are metropolitan areas, but there's a few more rural counties that, that have adopted this program. And, and I think this, this will be great for more counties, so with that, just kind of...
Yes, so Vincent, the Commissioner's invited us to Stable Energy Fund, who are the program administrators of CPACE, Commercial Property Assessment Energy, that's what it stands for. We're a nonprofit that's been in the energy world and finance for over twenty years, financing over a hundred million. We do not use our investments for CPACE, we are the program administrators to help counties get activated, go to the market. So it's another way for property owners to start investing in their buildings, because we're in Pennsylvania, and have quite a few older buildings that could use some upgrades, especially from an energy and water conservation measure. And this is just another tool and developers toolbox to help them finance the, the projects. Like I said, we have financing program, we also do education, so we would also be here to help the chamber get the word out, as well as any property owners if they wanted to talk and understand CPACE, or get connected to a contractor or an energy service provider. We would be here as an educational arm as well, to get out to the public. And then special projects, that's, CPACE initially was a special project, now we consider it more of a standard program under our program related investments, but from year to year, we'll do something different. Like, right now, we're doing a weather rise fund for nonprofits, just to help them make their buildings more efficient, because we saw that was a major need in most of our communities and throughout Pennsylvania. Like, the weekend like this, with their older buildings. So we established a fund with our financing that we can grant this money to nonprofits. So we always do something energy related, just to make it more accessible to residents, commercial owners, and nonprofits in Pennsylvania. So CPACE, it's a long-term innovative financing tool. It's, what makes it unique is that it's tied to the property tax. So it's tied directly to the property as opposed to a lien that's gonna be normally through your normal lender, through your bank. And we need the county buy-in, because it's a voluntary program, and since it's collected like a tax, we obviously would need someone that's managing the taxes to disperse the funds through the capital providers and collect the payments. And if there's a delay, we also, you would use your normal customary procedures to collect the CPACE payment. We are looking for measurable savings. Not anyone off the road can use CPACE. There has to be energy efficiency savings, and it depends on the type of upgrade. If it's a retrofit, we're looking for twenty cents, twenty percent better than the baseline. If it's new construction, we're looking for ten percent better than code. And then there's best of class equipment, and we would look at that on a case by case basis and make sure that it's meeting the guidelines, which the guidelines can be provided online, if you have one to use, you can see and have a thorough review of them. And that's, as a program administrator, we're, we're doing the paperwork and recording to make sure that they're meeting those guidelines. And it's collected through a special tax assessment. We adopted that language, that's the name, the nationwide language, they call it assessment, but it really is a special payment. It's gonna be invoiced either by the county or in the city, however you guys wanna do it. We often recommend that the county treasurer envoyses it, just to make it streamlined as possible, especially because of, it's depending on the software that you use, sometimes adding a line item to the tax bill is a challenge, but sometimes it's not. It really depends on the municipality. Things that it's called an assessment, it does not recreate and get a, the property will not have to be reevaluated or anything like that from an assessment standpoint. Nature's...
Specifically because of the CPACE program, but if they were doing, assumption is if they're doing that kind of development, maybe. I guess it would depend on what kind of energy efficiency they're, whether they were trick or treating assessment.
Yeah, maybe it was like a degree use and a add-on, obviously the property values are gonna change too, but yeah. So it's probably a medium, to case by case.
You're right.
Nationwide, it's over two billion dollars. California, Connecticut, and Ohio were some of the strongest CPACE markets around. Texas is coming up and coming. The median price is around two hundred and fifty thousand for the upgrades, but here in Pennsylvania, so far, we've seen quite a bit. In the first year of operations, we saw over twenty-two million dollars invested in our building stock between Philadelphia and North Hampton and Montgomery counties. So it's been around since twenty eighteen. There were a lot of stakeholders, we had both technical engineers working with us to develop the guidelines and come up with the, the great program. We had finance capital providers, boutique capital providers, most of them, but local banks, if they wanted to be able to go after larger investments, we've seen a few of them, like in Wayne County, which is one of the early adopters. The local banks were the ones that kind of pushed for it to get started, because they saw this as another tool that they can offer to their customers. And it's the long-term financing. Most banks, they might go five to seven years, even us, our, our equipment financing is five to seven years. But now, if you stretch it out to the life of the equipment and match it with the return on investment, it could go out twenty to twenty-five years and it's more affordable. It's a one-time payment, just like taxes, but as long as they're budgeting, or that monthly payment would essentially be less.
So the future of the bank is, it follows property, not owner?
Yes, that's key to it too, again, CPACE will stay with the property. So if the property owner sells it, the new owner is gonna take over the payments. And they'll negotiate that year, sell, how much of which is gonna take the lead, or that payment that year. And it does, if there was a property that was still in going default to, the only payment that is due is that year's assessment. Anything following is gonna stay and not a salary. So when a mortgage is due, or when there's gonna sell, the whole mortgage is due, right? The, the bank wants everything, and only that one year's assessment is gonna be senior. And we can't move a CPACE project forward without the mortgage lender providing consent. So there's a lot of tools and cases to make sure that no one's taking advantage of the program. Uploading the loans up in the beginning are, you know, in the back, and maybe they're gonna go interest only in the first few years. And then the next owner's gonna take over and have much more to pay for. We want a fixed rate throughout the twenty to twenty-five years. We haven't seen past twenty-five years so far, and maybe well depends if there's like a large toilet, chiller, excuse me, equipment that has a long life, useful life. Like I said, there's sixteen counties, we are talking to quite a few. Hopefully, we can start getting some of the rural counties in the middle of the state as well, maybe Warren will lead the way, one of the others. And one thing I should mention too, that CPACE can also be used for process operations. So if it's a manufacturer and they have a new process that's gonna make them use less energy, and as long as it's real property affixed to their building, they can use CPACE to finance it, which is a really nice tool. We've seen it used for agricultural farms, they use much more, more efficient equipment for milk and the cows. I apologize, they do not know all those type of things, and then inject and mold it, if they were using some sort of process that use less heat. It's always a really good way to use it, especially because the, the long term is really what's driving the factor. So it's a, it's another tool in the economic developers toolkit. They can offer small business financing, I know there's some other state financing, and this can be a add-on. It goes, it pairs nicely with RAPP, and not every property owner's gonna need it. But when they do, it's a really nice benefit for them, especially because it reduces some of the more expensive stuff. So it's not gonna be as cheap as the mortgage interest probably, but it's still a very competitive rate. Opportunity to create more jobs and also create an indoor healthy environment for building occupants, as well as less pollution, which is always the open. So the process. A property owner is usually gonna find an engineer, that's usually where they're gonna start and do an assessment. And then, it might not be the full energy analysis at this point, but they're gonna say, oh, there's quite a few energy saving measures we can install here. Once they have that project kind of in the conceptual stage, and they know it before, they might find a capital provider, which we have a laundry list of capital providers for Pennsylvania who have registered and embedded the rest. They can, any bank can register anytime if they wanted to, they'll submit the application. This is where we're gonna first make our contact with the county, and we'll wanna work with someone that's in the tax office to make sure that they're up to date on their taxes. And we'll do some vetting, because I know there's these shell LLCs that will buy properties, we would have to do some due diligence and maybe look a little bit forward. Because we wanna make sure that, that people that are using this are in good standing from a tax perspective, that's really important. If they don't make it through that process and the very initial step, they're not gonna get to move forward with CPACE financing.
I'm so be able to give you that.
Thank you. So, we'll be contacting you. So let's say they are a good standard, they're gonna move forward, and they're gonna actually have that energy analysis conducted, and they're gonna find out where their energy savings, and water conservation, I apologize, they exclude that a lot, but it's just as important. If they were to put in low flow fixtures, those can qualify as well. And if they were to start to have a... And if they were to start to have a great water harvesting system that can all plant. But they're going to build the project out with their engineer. And it has to be a certified energy engineer or a certified energy manager. Pass the house, it's all, there's a few guidelines that the engineer has to make as well as the contractor. So it's not just anyone on the street that can do these projects. As the program administrator, we'll send the application in, which is also going to include the mortgage lender consent, insurance as relevant. And we want to make sure that the contractor that's working on these projects is not delinquent or outstanding on any permits and fines. That's going to be something that we're looking at as well. And then there's a few other administrative and regulatory requirements they have to meet that we'll make sure that they are adhering to as a program supporter. And we're also going to be there, like if they're not meeting the energy analysis, we're going to work with them, we'll have a meeting and talk to them. Because we have technical people on staff that can walk through and be like, well, maybe you should look at this because this is still the project development. There's time for them to implement any changes before the construction or installation starts. Once that's reviewed and finalized, we'll work with the county to finalize the contract, which is called the Statement of Leaning Lean. This is going to be recorded with the title. This releases the county of all obligations if there's anything default or any issues that would happen. The capital provider cannot go after the county. It's stated very strongly in the Statement of Leaning Lean. We have several lawyers. And every time we meet with the county, they also review the Statement of Leaning Lean. If they want to make it stronger, we usually have, I think we're on our third iteration, they get stronger each time. We'll work with you to make sure that it meets and protects the county and you guys are okay with it. This will need to be signed by someone at the county that's authorized to sign. And they'll be signed by the capital provider, the property owner, and then the program administrator. So it's essentially a four-party contract. But this will have the lien details, what the assessment schedule is going to be, and all the information on the property. And it's going to have a description of everything that was included in the CPAC's contract. Once that's finalized, the funds are dispersed and they start on the project. And then we also have, once the project's done, we have to work the inspector to make sure that, it's not necessarily like a make sure that it's performing as they say. It's really to make sure that we were actually installed, this is installed correctly. We're going to work with an inspector to make sure this is done. And get a certificate of completion, just like with a construction project. So why is it need the county? Well, one, it has a resolution. We could go city by city with economic development corporations. For 67 counties, that's quite a list, it is, so I can't imagine going to every EDC. And then it's really nice because it opens up to everyone in the county. Just in case, most of the manufacturers write out that it's made up. So it's nice that they want to use this. It's going to cover the whole county. Prior to voting on the resolution to enable CPAC's, we'd have to notify the municipalities. So that's something, we have a letter, that's a template, you can edit it how you want and just send it out to your municipalities in your county. And then you'll be responsible for collecting the payment and the delinquencies. And it doesn't change any way that you already do when you're delinquencies. One thing, like you have the discounts, like if people pay off early, the CPAC lien is always the same amount. The discounts would apply to it and anything like that. But delinquency collection would be your standard procedure that you're already using. And if it's two years afterwards, you know, I know some counties, it's almost two years before they start to put them in the process for those tariffs now. So if they are not paying those two years, we have to wait. And the capital providers know that they have to wait for those two years. So once we get to a product and it's up and running and it's time to collect it, we will send a certified notarized letter with the property owners, the parcels, and all the information for you to bill the property owner. So and you use it and you're putting it in your software, however you want. The payment will come to the county. And then we have a pain agent, Wilmington Trust, who is going to disperse it to the capital provider. So it's essentially a pass-through. The fees will all be sent. And if you wanted to add a collection fee for the county, because we're not quite sure how much this is going to cost for you to administer to us, you can add a fee as well. And then kind of to reiterate what we're doing, we support the projects and make sure that they're reading the guidelines. As a program administrator, we will provide reporting for each project, as well as do you want to do quarterly or annual reporting, depending on how used it is. We will provide those reports of your discretion, whatever you would like. And then we're going to be here to help activate the market. We have a Western Community rep who will be really doing some business development and help provide education. And then, of course, we'll be out here on a regular basis. We're getting some good initial time. And I'm kind of thankful for that because COVID was rough at home all the time. So we see mostly, these are about 50% of the projects are energy efficiency projects, but renewable energy is also something that's kind of about a quarter. Resiliency potentially may be coming online. There is a bill in Senate right now that is going to look at adding multifamily, which is not legal right now. And it looks like the requirement as of right now on the variable change is going to be five minutes or more of multifamily. That's what the legislation reads right now. We're the only state with CPAC that doesn't do multifamily. And that seems to cause uproar for a few people. But that's going to be in the legislation in the fall. So if there's lost states.
Pennsylvania, tradition.
There's always something, right?
Something works for everybody else and we obviously can do it.
So if that were to change this year, we would, as the program administrators, with some of the key major partners that we work with to get the program up and running, we would make sure that there are consumer protections. And especially for affordable housing. When it comes to multifamily, that's more commercial. I don't think we have to see as much. We want to make sure, I don't know if you guys saw John Oliver where they've been on residential CPAC. So a lot of low-income senior residents were taken advantage of. And that's why we've been very anti-residential pace because they didn't know, that there was no one telling them that, hey, your tax bill's going to go up. Or, and they were at the end of their life and then all of a sudden this like huge bill was added. So we wanted to stay away from that. That was from the get-go in 2018 with the legislation passed. We did, we didn't want one single-family residential, but multifamily would be okay. And no government-owned buildings could use this, unfortunately. But that's, you guys have really great guaranteed energy savings agreements that are really nice and probably a little bit better interest than this. There's a few case studies. I know some of them might not be relevant. They're a little bit larger projects. There was a $10 million resort west, which was historic preservation as well as an add-on with a hotel. I thought the, I added one since I was here last time, which was a solar project in Philadelphia. It's about $500,000 and it included both the roof as well as the solar PV system. And it's a $500,000 project for a day school. So it's owned by a commercial lender, or not a commercial lender, a commercial property developer that brings to the school and a couple other complexes. But it was just really nice because of the, they were held back from going solar for quite a while because the roof really needed to be repaired because it wasn't structurally sound. And that's one thing that's really nice about CPAC too. They can roll in any ancillary upgrades that are there to support the energy conservation measures, which is really great. So far, that's the lowest one we've seen in Pennsylvania. But doesn't mean we won't. I know there's a couple of them that are in the pipeline. And sometimes what we see in the biggest holdup is getting the mortgage lender consent. So now we're really focusing and trying to get out to the banks so they understand and are more comfortable with this.
How many banks do you try to work with?
Well, the Capital Right, we have over 20 registered. But we've been, we have a pretty lengthy list of traditional financiers that we have been trying to get the word out to. And that's just been getting lists for Chamber list and anything like that. And that's it, much, unless you have any questions about some of the technical stuff.
Start with Brian, old assessment director. Do you have any questions?
I don't think very at the moment. You know, if we can handle it, it's pretty same way we handle our special taxes now.
Right, so you don't think it would be a huge burden to be honest?
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think it would be used heavily, like just based on the population. But I could see a few key businesses that would put in time.
Would it be a special tax or would it be another taxing district? So like be a third paper in your bill?
I mean, if it's basically just like a payment like a tax is, it would be just another line item on the bill.
Special one, special two, or something?
That's the way I would look at it.
Any questions?
Good.
Vincent? You mentioned multiple, or multiple housing businesses. And you mentioned that that's being debated in the Pennsylvania Senate.
In the fall, legislation, Senate Bill 635. And I don't know where it stands in the House, so.
We have a potential project that comes to mind if we receive low-income housing tax credits. And that might be, this might be another tool that could help them with their capital stack and make it a reality. So yeah, that sounds really interesting. But you can imagine that that type of project, HVAC-type systems, that like, you know, any water-type of conservation measures and all that could be financed. Think about any of our adaptive reuse projects, redevelopment projects that we're looking at. And, you know, some of our historic buildings, you know, HVAC windows, building envelope, water.
The sun is heating the top floor of the Burke House.
Yeah.
Technically, wouldn't that be less, be less heat?
They're using that to heat the place.
No, I'm, it's an inside joke. Very bad joking for taste. But those buildings there are ones that I, you know, foresee this, you know, to put these projects together takes a great investment and a lot of risk and about first part. So this type of financing could be very helpful in trying to put the deal together.
Those are good examples of the type of space that we would want to use.
Absolutely.
The two mixed-use projects so far, there's been one in Philadelphia and one in Northampton, the Commodore, which is part of the packet. We had to condo-wise separate and have the residential completely separate. So they had to work with the planning department closely and make sure that they were segregated. And the only commercial space was including CPAC, which would have been nice. I think they would have used up the whole complex if they could have.
Mr. Schmidt, do you have questions about implementation of such authorizations in the program?
I thought it was explained pretty well. You have an ordinance that creates the program. And then you have, you know, financing documents. I think the way it would be implemented with Phil's department is pretty clear, so.
Yeah, so the resolution and also have a progress agreement that would help get us, set up the lines of what probably works in program administration. And then, of course, each contract for each project, it's own contract.
Now, the, your organization, I mean, the Energy Center.
It's the Stable Energy Fund.
Is the only CPAC organization that's handling it, right?
Yeah, other than Philadelphia Energy Authority, which is only handling Philadelphia. It's okay.
So this talks about renewable energy systems. I never, I hadn't thought about this, but like, what about the solar array in and of itself? I mean, would it potentially fund just an installation like that?
Yeah, you're going to close ground mountain because they're screwed into the problem.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious about that. I have been to the, like I said, I went to the presentation, I think it was 2019 when we were writing. I feel like it was 2019, and that, and the program had just started. So that was kind of how the discussion was there. I remember there being a lot of questions, but it made perfect sense to me.
You're saying, because the solar would be part of the realty and therefore it would be available. Available would be levied as an asset, realty assessment, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that was, yeah, exactly. Thanks for catching up on that.
You're right.
We just recently had someone come in that was interested in a dam. And I was surprised that it was eligible what it is for the power. We have a list in the appendix, K, I might want to say, but I may have that wrong. A laundry list of all the eligible improvements, so probably it might be easy to see that. I'll get you guys the CPAC in the box, which has the guidelines, Statement of Leaning Lean, everything for you to review. I had an actual flash drive, but if I remember correctly, some of you guys made a flash drive on your computer here at the county.
Right?
Yeah. You know, I think if it's giving one.
Yeah. And I think that the program is great, definitely supportive.
I'm not saying drawbacks, so.
Well, I mean, more case scenarios apply for it. I mean, I, I sort of agree with you in the sense that you're, it's not like there's going to be a huge number, like overall, but, so I don't think it would be a huge weight to carry, you know. But those handful of projects, I mean, you know, even some of the, I mean, just walk, taking a walk down Liberty Street and the number of buildings that need to be retrofitted. And even if you were going to just renovate it so that you just turn it on a apartment building or like you're like a boutique hotel, you're going to have to put all of this stuff in it. So why not take advantage of it?
Even for like denser counties that we have on board, Montgomery, they've operated for over a year, they've only had one project. Northampton, it took almost two years to get a project through. We're still waiting for it in Allentown, but they took a long time to develop. We have a great project in downtown Allentown, but it's nowhere close to being ready to finish up their capital spend.
The other thing I was noting is, I know the city could do this on their own, right? But I have not thought for how relevant it could be to some of the smart. And just, for instance, you brought a dairy, I'm familiar with a dairy that is moving forward, getting a bottom milk herd. That kind of thing really could be tied to the firm.
That's good.
I mean, from my perspective, it's a really new concept that is from Pennsylvania. So I think that's why it'll take time before it becomes a common.
Yeah, I feel like we need to get out in front of the world, the rural, the agricultural industry more and get them to know. Because I know there's already a question for a lot of solar, but what about the dairy and anything like that? Because if there's, if their engineers are there, they're working on it. We need to make sure that it works down to that.
Yeah, but I think a lot of folks just don't even know that this is, you know, possibilities. When they're doing a construction project, some of that stuff, if you reduce that barrier to entry, that makes their ability to launch it and move forward much easier.
I just have one or two, they're not legal questions. Well, I guess the first one is, I mean, maybe if you cover this a lot, but if there's a property that already has a lien on it, like a mortgage or something, is that going to just totally disqualify it from? Or it's going, because the discipline would obviously, a president's is being treated as a tax.
Just the one year of that assessment. And then it won't look forward if the mortgage lender is not providing the sales.
They have to provide incentive, it's a coordination, so. Okay. Some of these, I was looking at your plans and some of these, like they'll save $27,000 a year. That won't as well.
It's not going to pay, it's not cash flow positive.
Right, that's, I guess that was my question. So that's not a determining factor about whether a project gets a green light or not.
No, that's the love-hate relationship here in Pennsylvania. We have such cheap energy that we're not going to be cash flow positive like Connecticut or New Orleans might be, but, you know.
There's obviously.
We like our cheap electricity too.
There's always the other positives and you have to get the renovation done.
Yeah.
And this is another way to accomplish it.
It'll reduce the operating of it. And it's a great way to monetize and invest in your building.
All right.
Yeah, it wouldn't survive here if that was a requirement.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything, that's all.
I would just have to make sure that there are energy statements. Not necessarily cost, but energy statement.
You know, it's a shame, this is again off the side, but, I mean, the biggest properties that Phil knows about that could use renovating or the, the stuff that goes with the tax stuff, the trailer, you know, you find a way to refurbish, similar old properties. I mean, that would be, I guess I can see it both ways, you know, whether you want to make that a bill or not.
A single-family one is going to be hard, but the multifamily is.
Yeah.
What are your other programs in Pennsylvania?
Any other questions? Here, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back up and presentation. If you have a chief partner, you might be in touch about sample ordinance or what kind of stuff should be.
I'll listen and I'll do that too.
Thank you.
Yes, have a lovely week, thank you.
Are you going all the way back to Birds now?
I am, but what do I have to do to drive, so.
Listen to a podcast or something.
Yes. It's really beautiful out here.
Thank you for your knowledge, thanks for being here.
That's good. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. On policies and procedures, we have several on the agenda for this, for the month's day. Fuel use, related to subpolicies and procedures. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. I'm just glad to be here today to contribute to collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I'll have the energy cremation done by then. So we just need to go, right?
Oh, okay.
So you could add, it sounds like we need to add this one for hair and long horses. And then the taxpaying bureau fee schedule could be easily reformed. CPAs won't be ready or anything, but so. Project updates?
The next work session, Dan Watts and I will be talking about a grant, BP grant. We're going to be putting in for nine and four grand for, or nine and two grand for stuff for glass recycling. We found a company out of Erie that's doing really fantastic work with the glass recycling. And want to try to engage the local businesses. We have a few bodies that have, right? And so we're going to try to talk to them about, because they all have to, they have to, they're mandated by the state to do all the stuff with the glass that they have and they generate an immense amount of it. And we might actually be able to save some of the program. So we'll be, we'll talk about that. We'll do a presentation at the next work session for that. And then there's other stuff, but I don't.
And any project updates? Mission schedule, if we can, we can do that. Two last minute, John Walker, information, this is the Valley Dream, I can see this. Anyone else got on the agenda?
I don't think so.
Okay. And the apartment updates? We have a frequent township hearing this evening, town hall township over there.
So you're here or elevating?
It's a town hall, I guess.
We'll be listening.
There'll be, there'll be a listener.
If you're, not your name is.
That can hear, okay.
Very old in the.
Okay. Schedule wise for the normal week?
Thursday, we've got town hall, you know, we put. We did, we've done more promotion, so I think that this, this one will get some people. That's a good feedback on what's across.
Okay, any general discussion? Any closing comments, questions, thoughts?
CTA conferences this weekend, start Sunday evening.
By the way, so I'm not registered through the county, but I have a doctor's appointment down there. So I still don't pop in for a couple hours, just.
I should have asked that.
No, I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited to see.
I'm watching Tom's next week also.
Oh, it is?
Stable.
The national.
And that, there are Creek Mountain Lodge. It's in a weird town, I don't know. It's five hours away.
In a weird town.
It's in Berkshire County in front too.
Do you know, are you in Crystal Road, Dylan?
Yes.
That'll be fun.
Not aware of any reason to go to executive. Any urgent, you know, executive?
No, not even.
We have our next executive session. No, it's not next Monday because of CTA, so it would be a couple weeks out.
It's okay.
Here, well, if there's nothing else, then over here.